Lights on. Okay. Is there anybody online over there?
And that's send somebody the address.
Yeah. Okay, we will call. Uh, the uh. Needing to order, would you please take a roll call?
Mike Kavler. Jenny Manson.
Here.
Virginia Lewis. Tom Neese.
Yeah.
Brittany Hopper.
Here.
Molly Snodgrass.
Here.
Louie Greenwell.
Yeah.
We have, I think Virginia may have just, no, that wasn't Virginia coming in. Uh, but I did not hear from Virginia, so we'll give her a few more minutes to come, but we do have. The one open seat and did you decide which of you was? Louie's gonna. Be sitting on the board tonight because we have an open seat. There she is.
Alright.
And Virginia just walked in, so. We now have a, a full complement. On the board here.
You can set up, you can sit up there. We're taking care of it all.
Think I've only done. Um, I see no other zoning officials present. But this is Valerie Hamel, our zoning assistant. We will, we, we are on Zoom and Zooming will be recorded. Please, anybody who is on Zoom in the chat, please give your uh, name and address so that the. Uh, assistant can record that. Also, anybody who's walked in, public present, sign in, please. At the, the desk by the door.
We appreciate that, it makes it a lot easier to get them in.
We have a. Hearing coming up at seven forty-five and we will break for that hearing. Uh, but we have a few minutes to get some paperwork done. We can give five minutes now, if anybody has a quick question for the board. There will be additional uh, time for the public to participate. Uh, afterwards. But if there's just something really quick that needs to be addressed by the board.
I will have a couple of questions to ask.
Okay.
Oh, okay, there's zoning request.
Oh, we're not in the zoning request yet. Wait for the hearing on that, please. Uh, we don't have our zoning uh, director here tonight. So I'm assuming there are no new applications coming in. No report from the zoning director. Mike Kavler, the chair is absent, has no report, I have no special report, Tom, do you have any special reports?
No.
Anybody else up here have? Reports, no? Okay, let's quickly review some of the minutes. We received these. Earlier and had a chance to review them. Um, I will. I'd like to have a motion on the um. Minutes for application HTZZ twenty-four oh three. Um, from what I've seen, I believe Valerie has. Changed, oh, no, um. The public via Zoom, I'm thinking that uh, should have been changed from Mike Singer to Bob Singer.
Yeah, I just got that in an hour, I have a cousin named. So yes, I will get that.
Okay, so please correct your.
Well, there.
That, um. Or anything else? That people don't see in, in the, the hearing minutes that. Uh, we discussed online and, and wanted changed.
We do have a comment we're getting for a group of landowners.
That's on, yeah.
That's on one or the other.
That's for that. Okay, yeah, sorry, I got a tealing.
Yeah, no. I did see that one too, good.
Well, then, do I make a motion that we? Approve this? That, the comment she's talking about is the regular meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, make a.
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the uh, meeting minutes from hearing HTZZ twenty-four oh three as corrected.
A motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Um. We can quickly review the uh. In my package, I have uh. May thirteenth. Workshop. Meeting minutes, but I don't have the uh. Regular meeting minutes from. I have a regular meeting, you want mine? Did you, did, were these in our package, Valerie?
I was gonna say, I have two workshop meeting minutes, but only one regular meeting, so maybe there's.
No, wait a minute, this should have been. Yes. The May sixth, regular meeting minutes that we reviewed together online.
Yeah.
Um, I'll look on his carriers with uh. Let me go to coffee.
I have one.
Oh, you have that one?
No, I had, yeah, I just have double the thirteenth.
Oh, that's an extra. Okay, so we did review these and there was one changed that uh. Valerie, that's okay, I just, I just gave you one, um. Was the, was this the uh, the group?
Yes, so on public comments. The first sentence discussed a comprehensive plan for a group of landowners.
And it looks like most other thing is, again, change Mike to Bob Singer.
When I do it once, I do it a few times.
This second page. Um, where it's, it's Mr. Kavler then called the regular meeting to, to. To recess.
Yeah.
It should be HTZZ twenty-four days.
Oh, three.
And that's in a red line.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion? I make a motion that we approve the regular minute, meeting minutes from May sixth as corrected.
Second?
Well, second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? A motion is approved as. Is there, um, and let's see, we also still had the workshop meeting minutes of five thirteen. Did we already see this one? This one was, was this one emailed to us before?
I haven't seen this one before.
I don't think I've seen it either.
Okay, I think this might be the first time I'm seeing this one too.
Oh, for the workshop meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. I do have a question though, maybe I'm misremembering. At the bottom of the second page, it says, no parcel land shall has, have less than two net acres, I thought. The motion was to have. No, I thought it was to change net to gross, am I misremembering?
No, we just removed the part about having recorded easements.
Yeah, recorded.
We didn't say that it grows, but we allow.
Right.
They don't.
I, I think Molly's correct, but I would have to go back to my notes.
So it's still adjusted for the road running, but.
Right, okay.
When, when we actually read the motion that was made, um, it says, we wrote the language recorded.
Recorded, ah, okay, got it.
Motion is carried.
So it's still not gross acres, it's still net of the road.
Yeah, this would happen.
Okay, thank you. See, I was messing.
That was a very complicated conversation.
Are, are we? Ready to move on this one, or do people want more time? During the.
I didn't realize this was gonna be reviewed tonight, so that could be why, I just thought we did it workshop next week, so totally up to you.
We, maybe we can do it next week.
We can wait on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, let's wait on this one.
Now, did anybody need a copy of it, because I have two for some reason. Got that one. Thank you.
About you, you'll uh. You'll email us.
Although, I think, you, you mentioned there's a hearing tonight, I don't think I have that, a copy of that. Do you have an extra copy of that?
Everybody.
I was not. This, I was not there, I'm guessing that was presented.
It was received on May sixth.
Well, that keeps, because I haven't had a chance to review it. Do I not vote then?
No, we'll be going through it here.
Okay.
Yeah, like you can make.
So I can still vote. I feel.
Alright.
So inclined.
It is uh, seven forty-five and I would like to um. Recess. The reg, uh, the regular meeting. And open the hearing. So, regular meeting is recessed, Valerie, would you call the role for the? Um. Hearing for.
Jenny Manson. Virginia Lewis.
If I can help you.
Thank you.
I'll do my civic duty for the day. I saw it.
Oh, here, sorry.
Uh, Molly Snodgrass, here, Louie Greenwell.
Here.
Okay, and once again, since Mike is absent, Louie will be sitting on the board.
Thank you for the folder of stuff.
I know it's for this.
And once again, uh. The zoning assistant is Valerie Hamel, our zoning director is not present tonight. And there are no other township officials present. Um, so I'll start by explaining. The hearing rules and procedures. The commission members will comment and or ask the initial questions. There will be no public interaction at this time. When this is finished, the public will have the opportunity to comment and or ask questions. During this time, please observe the following procedures. Only one person speak at a time. Please come up and speak at the podium. At that time, give your name and address so the secretary can record it. Be brief, be factual. Please do not bring up a point or question previously addressed and or asked. Remember, while only one person can be heard at a time. Please do not interrupt the speaker. Please be civil. Please do not carry on your own conversation while an individual is speaking. If a certain group wants to be heard, please have a spokesman for the group address the commission. The purpose of the zoning commission hearing is to determine if. The zoning request complies with the requirements of the zoning code and the Harlem Township Master Plan. Be sure your comments address these points directly. When there are no further questions and or comments from the public. The public portion of the hearing will be closed. From that point, no further public comments and or questions will be entertained. Commission members will then have the opportunity to make any additional comments or ask any additional questions. I'd like to open the hearing, Madam Secretary, please read the publication notice.
Public notice, the Harlem Township Zoning Commission is being asked to consider the following. Dustin Ward and Michelle Morris, one-one-seven-six-one, Fancher Road, Westerville, Ohio. Four-three-oh-eight-two is seeking a variance to rezone six-point-eight-oh-nine acres. From AL one to FR one for a new family home, can you build on parcel ID? Three-one-six, three-four-zero, zero-one, zero-four-four, zero-zero-five. The hearing is scheduled for June third, twenty-twenty-four, at seven forty-five PM at the Harlem Township Firehouse. At three-eighty-three, South State Route six-oh-five, Galena, Ohio, four-three-oh-two-one. The hearing is open to the public, it is also available via Zoom. The application accompanying documents are available on the website, Mike Kavler, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hamel. Um. And I, I think Mike has already. Mentioned to you that in, in future notices, do not refer to it as a variance.
Yes.
This isn't zoning application.
I've got it, thank you.
That's fine. Okay, uh, Madam Secretary, is the application on the correct form?
Yes.
Has the applicant or is their agent signed the request for rezoning?
Yes.
What is the specific zoning request?
The specific zoning request. Will be to um, three-seven-six-point-eight-seven-nine acres from AL one to FR one for a new family home.
Thank you. Was the correct legal description furnished in text and map, and do they reinforce each other? And this is mainly for the board?
Uh, there was one minor discrepancy, which shouldn't have any bearing on. On, on, on the hearing, but on the map. Uh, at the very bottom. Um, what it calls out, just above the uh. North eighty-six degrees, fifty-one minutes, twelve seconds. Um. The second direction is missing, so there should be a, a W after that call. It's just me, so, um, other than that, I, I don't see any discrepancies.
I have a W on mine. He's talking about the, the smaller one, oh, the little one. Okay. Um. Any other? Discrepancies between the map and the legal description? Okay. I saw none also, so. Madam Secretary, have the. Adjacent, adjoining contiguous and or across from property owners? Been notified?
Yes, they have been.
Or are, are there any non notified? Uh, property owners present? Were there any signed or notarized waivers for non notified property owners?
No.
Did you get any returns?
None returned, nineteen were mailed, none returned.
Do the. Mission members have any questions for the applicants or comments? I see we have a power of attorney. For uh, Dustin Ward and Michelle Morris. That would be power attorney to plan for land.
To place plan for land, one South Harrison Street, actually, Ohio, just here, uh, in case you have any questions, uh. We helped to prepare the application and. And review the comprehensive plan, it looked like the request was compliant with the uh, plan's recommendations.
Okay. Um, you get anything from Delaware?
Yeah, do we have?
And it was on a meeting, but I did not receive their meeting minutes.
I can testify, I was there present at the hearing, that they did recommend approval of the uh, request, uh, with the recommendation that we have soils tested. Uh, prior to uh, loss block approval.
And the soils tests were for septic systems, or, yeah. Okay.
And those tests have already been done?
Uh, they have been, yes, uh, Smart Services out of Newark, uh, completed onsite test for it.
Well, I think they might have given us.
Points with the regional planning's last request, they had asked for development plan, I know we don't typically provide those, but uh, we did provide one just to uh. Ensure a easy recommendation from regional planning.
It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Um, I had one question about that in the second column. Bottom.
Yes.
Development plan, it reads, um. The owners, their successors, heirs or signs of these lots agree. Then when, when a central sewer, sewage system becomes available, said lot shall be connected to it. Um, is that? Boilerplate requirement now?
It is, uh, it's actually been a requirement for uh, for, I think, twenty plus years. Uh, but it's a statement on every development plan that goes through Delaware County. It's required by the uh, Delaware County Engineer, Sanitary Engineers Office, uh, to comply that. They can require a connection to sewer as it becomes available to the site.
They've never seen that before, okay, and then at the cost will be at whoever owns the property at that time.
Correct. Yeah, it actually indicates, uh, at the top of the third column, all B's associated with the connection to central sewer, sewer shall be the responsibility of the home.
Any other possible errors noted? So, again, for the board. To check with Joe. I noticed some. Issues and it's not. Terribly important to the hearing, but uh, on the front page of your application. Uh, the names for numbers two and three are switched around, at least based on the map, that's. The uh.
Oh, they got switched, uh. Yeah, I think there was some confusion, I thought we caught that, it. We thought they went across. Said they go down, so yeah, those names might have got switched on there.
And one other thing. Parcel number and uh, nineteen. On your map and on your list.
Yes.
Um, the. Uh, auditors, Delaware County Otter's website lists. A different owner, it lists Denise Anne Luxon instead of Darlene A. Luxon. And Darlene A. is still the one uh, listed for seventeen and eighteen. But nineteen apparently has a different. Current owner.
We might have pulled that from the tax address, not necessarily the owner, so it might be the tax address is why it's listed that way. If it was getting sent to, to Darlene as well, but. We can verify.
It, um. If. The tax address is different, the tax address would be um, Larita LLC in Pomona, California.
Oh, so it was a tax service?
That's the tax service.
Okay.
And the owner's name is Denise, and the address is one-one-six-eight-two Fancher. And she does get an owner occupied credit, so she is obviously. Living there.
Yeah. Okay, and that's labeled out the same as. Eighteen and seventeen.
Yeah.
Back, okay. You make the correction, I'm not sure, uh, we, they get notice for the trustee hearings, is that something that would happen?
They do not get notice for the trustee hearings.
Yeah.
There's another issue, numbers fifteen and sixteen. According to the Delaware County. Auditor's website. Um. Those should have been listed as Tess Barry Swartz, Swartz and Jacob Swartz. At one-one-seven-eight-four Fancher. They seem to be confused with. Properties one to the east.
Those, those aren't contiguous across the road, but the other one was, um, but that, I would uh, think we would want to get corrected as well.
That would hopefully be corrected, they are also. Mister, there's getting an owner occupied credit, so they obviously live there and their tax address is uh. Core logic in Texas.
Okay.
Um. So we usually send it to the homeowners who are actually at that. Uh, one-one-seven-eight-four Fancher Road.
Would it make sense to uh, to send them notice prior to uh, proceeding, just to get proper notice out to them?
Uh, we've never had this issue before, I don't know if this is something that we need to. Recess the hearing in order to notify. People who didn't get notified.
Do fifteen and sixteen really need to get notified? The only way they're.
Technically, they wouldn't.
Connected is that.
Right, seventeen would have been. And fifteen and sixteen would not.
So since fifteen and sixteen technically aren't contiguous across from.
Yeah.
Jason, whatever. Then I would say.
Nineteen isn't enough.
Especially because I would assume that it's a family member of Darlene, since that's not the world's most common last name.
Yeah. Any other views on this?
I. I think we've been advised that, that minor errors like this in the notifications are not a reason to hold up the hearing.
I will make it a point to make sure we get proper addresses, though, if it makes sense to send them before the trustee hearing, just to make sure they were notified and they have ample time to.
Yeah, we can give that to them, appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Yeah, but as far as I see it, fifteen and sixteen would just be a courtesy and not a necessity. They're not. Don't technically.
They do technically don't touch.
But of it all.
Property, yeah, so.
So we're saying that nineteen, which is actually Denise Anne Luxon.
Mm-hmm.
Look, yeah, she didn't get notified.
Correct.
And what was the address you had for?
Her address is one-one-six-eight-two.
One-one.
One-one-six-eight-two.
Eight-two.
Yeah, Fancher.
It's Western. It's Western Polynice.
Yeah. Um, four-three-oh-eight-two. And I'm not quite sure what was going on with number fourteen.
A lot of times when the names of the owners are not listed, it's for security reasons.
Yeah, and we did try to pull a name. Which, I, we try not to, yeah, I think it was blocked by the auditor, so we just listed and sent it as unknown owner.
Oddly enough, though, if you look up nine-two-two-six Belmont Place in Pickerington, you do get names.
Yeah, we, um, I'm not sure if they were the owner, but I think that's the tax address as it was sent out, so we uh. And that was what was listed as the tax address per the deed, but we wanted to, we didn't want to uh. Didn't want to release anybody's name that we shouldn't be releasing, so I'm sure it was blocked for some reason.
Yeah, it wasn't returned.
Okay.
We've run into that before, we. Used to go back and pull them off the deed and um, had an attorney tell us that was not the proper. They're blocked, they should be blocked, they shouldn't go into public documents, so. We, uh, we did not dig any further past the deed.
Yeah, that's fine, it's just, it just sort of means odd that Fairfield County doesn't have it blocked.
Sure. And it might be in a, yeah, I'm not sure the relationship to that address.
So I had tax documents sent to my sister while we were building our house, so just because they get sent to another address doesn't mean it's necessarily the same one.
Okay. As long as we're notifying. The people that we're supposed to be notifying. Okay.
So then as far as you're concerned, the only one for now that needs another letter would be Denise.
Denise.
That's number nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then you will give me the updated.
Yeah.
Did anybody else notice any other possible errors?
Finally, good, Tom's comment, I do believe that's Wes, uh, if you want to verify that for the uh.
You know, I'm sure, I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
Just.
Maybe he tried to make that a fancy W, but uh, I see it's a land book or something there, but. I, I'm just joking, I, I think he just ran out of room, so Wes didn't make the.
Yeah, for, for whatever reason, it, it's not. It's, it's a very.
It's not actually part of the property anyway, it's just directions to the beginning of the property.
Yeah, to the next intersection there.
Yeah.
The commission members have any questions for the applicants?
My only question would be uh, whether. This kind of documentation is going to be your practice going forward?
I leave that up to you guys, uh, it sounds like regional planning is wanting to see some record of what we're seeking out to justify the request, so. Uh, we can start providing them, uh, and. Uh, in our last application, we hadn't prepared it yet, so it wasn't something that I had readily available, but we can definitely make sure that it's available to you. Uh, even if it's a concept plan to at least explain what our practice is, but this is the development plan that I'll have to go through the last split approval, so we have to have all the information available to us when the time we apply.
No extra work for you?
Not for this one, uh, some of them, if they're exploratory, or if we haven't completed some of the tests yet, or had some of the conversations, we may not be to that point yet, but um, it may be at an added cost to a property owner to have a development plan prepared before submission. But maybe a worthwhile expense, it's going to happen one way or another, it's just.
Yeah, the county planning is going to, regional planning will want it, so. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, Molly, did you have any questions for me there? Okay, then I will open the hearing to members of the public who want to ask questions of the board or the applicant. You had a question?
My name is Gordy Mann. I live at sixty-two eighty-four Millipole Road. And, uh, just, uh, I, I know you might be aware of it or not. Uh, that that land was dropped into eight parcels.
Mm-hmm.
And there was five parcels are on Millipole Road. And all the water, uh, if you could look at the topo, I don't know whether you have or not, goes through their property. In, in, in the back, where I think if we got approval, the house will be built. Uh, because through my, through our house, uh, the the water channels through that, that way.
Okay, what, what number, what number on Miller call did you say you were?
Sixty-two eighty-four. And, and I have the pictures taken recently, but I don't know if I can download it or not, I can show you the channel. It pretty much, I, I, I was not able to come and see the, where the house is going to be built, but my guess is, it's going to be pretty much there where that water channel goes. And when we build this.
Yeah, they did. Or stretch there, so that's.
And you can see where the.
It, it is correct. It's, it's, it's right about there, I can show you on my picture where the water channel goes. I don't know whether you have, should have a hundred year flood plan, uh, what the topo is. You can see from my house, when heavy rain comes in, it, it, water stays there for almost all day. Then it goes off. So that's my main concern, because then, uh, I'm back of it, and that's where it's going to be, and, 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 and actually, it does show a little bit in here, uh, that green spot where the water goes in.
Mm-hmm.
So it, that should be considered, and the, uh,
Is low spot? Yeah.
Uh, it, it is a low spot, yeah, whenever you do a PUG test.
And fourteen.
PUG test will pass.
And eighteen.
You know, there's no doubt about it, because the PUG test is how quickly the water can move the dirt. But when the water is standing there, and the, the sewer system will be flooded up unless I, I don't know, I, maybe I can see it.
Well, you can see it on this next too.
Yeah, see, you can see it, it's about where my house is, it's about six feet down there. Uh, uh, then, so they had to build it up about six foot, and if they build up six, six feet, then they're going to put us all around. So that should be considered. Uh, for, for, for approval, actually, it should be, uh, considered when that whole, all these nine lots were approved, I, I, I have built homes in Miami's World, south of Dayton. They require approval before even they consider. Uh, so there's more detention center, water detention for these nine lots. I think it's nine, yeah. So nothing, so it's a free flow water, if you put a house in there, uh,
It's on.
Even towards three feet higher than this elevation. I, I'm pretty sure it's still be under a hundred year, uh, wa- waterfall.
Because he's it. Um.
So I, I, I don't know whether you have.
There, 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 that is, is, that is not a, a recognized stream that would have a hundred year flood plain.
Yeah, but.
It's, it's a drainage.
Okay, well.
Um, gully that would not that would not apply to. Um, but the, the drainage is all, all considered by, uh, was it Delaware? Water? What is it, the Delaware?
Soil and water.
Engineer.
On, uh, and it's, it's not something that we actually can, can take into account. Um, because the house approvals would have to go through all kinds of approvals before they can, can build.
I, I could address, so we have to go through lot split approval, go through Delaware County Soil and Water, uh, Conservation District, or Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District, and the county engineer. I believe they're going to require an easement with some upgrades in that area. Um, but I can't speak for that, because we haven't got through that process yet, but um, that is part of the reason why, I understand this is two lots, not three, that's being proposed, because of that drainage corridor that passes through there, so as you can see, I tried to include on the aerial, just you can see that dark swath.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it might cover more than that, but that's something, uh, we'll have to address with soil and water, there might be a broken tile or something in there too.
No, no, the, tiles are only broken. When there were those homes, because I, I can see the tile. Uh, I wish I could have done, downloaded the pictures, because I, I can see, well, after it rains five, six days, the water comes through the tiles, and those drain tiles were put in the the, the, the session time for the farmers, you know?
Yeah.
For that, and these are old tiles. And, and the, uh, other question I have is whenever I moved from Miami's World over here, I had, I'm seventy-six years old person. For me, it's easier to buy a new house or a existing house to live in there. With both bare knee replaced, I bought this lot, because I live, want to live on the countryside, I didn't want to see, I'm selfish, I don't want to see a house behind my property, so I paid extra for the lot and waited for two years to build a house. So I don't see anything. Uh, what is next? Then I, I have two point four acres, then I, I can request for, since building a house next to it.
Where the zoning reached now, no, you can't.
No, that's what I'm saying, so.
Minimum zoning is, is two acres.
Yeah, so, so that was built, uh, those three lots are three lots are six point eight or seven, not, that's out there, because, uh, uh, they couldn't give access in the back. That, that's my understanding.
And then unfortunately, that's just a pressure all of us are facing, especially with Intel, all of us are
Yeah.
are getting more development around than, than I think we had originally intended, which is why we're still here working and trying to get things put in place to at least keep it at bay, but.
Well, then the problem comes in, like Houston, that's what they did, build it up, build it up, and then we start getting flooding.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then who suffers in the flooding? So these things should be considered, like this water channel. I think, personally, I think it, it starts right here.
Unfortunately, we are not allowed to make decisions based on, on water.
No, I, I, I understand it. And, and, and the other issue is, I, I got, uh, Delaware County Engineers over there, because, uh, they said, well, you, you would build a lot before this guy, so you have to adjust the water system according to them, I said, no, that's wrong. You should have, when you approve this, that should have been there at that time. So it, it, it your responsibility is there too, but it's not in the black and white.
Well, as, as zoning commission, we're looking at land use. The land use in this case is single-family residential. And it's, it's clear to me that this parcel conforms to what we would look at. In terms of drainage, that's not for us to decide, we're the first step in a very long process. And the drainage from your property to this property, the drainage through the property to other properties becomes an issue at the county level.
So, and we will be informed of that too?
Um.
Or not?
You would probably not be informed, you would have steps to actively um, follow this, uh, development, to see when it goes through regional planning, when it goes to the county engineer, when it goes to Soil and Water Conservation District, when it goes to the General Health District, to see what the decisions are being made on where the house is being placed and what the provisions are for drainage.
So then, then we'll be out of the, then we got to keep on calling, so it depends on how big the builder is, how much enforcement they have, they can just push through the system, and, and then it'll be done.
There are, there are public hearings at other, at, at levels different than ours.
No, that's what I was asking, so we will be.
Hearings and express your, your concerns, I mean, I appreciate the expression of the concern in this case, most people would not come to us and say, I think there's a problem with this, a potential problem with the drainage on this parcel. And you may be right. We don't have the expertise to decide that, and we don't have the authority to, to decide that. Our authority is to decide on, on the zoning.
Because it, it shows in there that it was seven feet down where my, my backyard is. So I, I think you should be putting your notes that somebody mentioned that.
It will be in the minutes.
Yeah.
It will go into our minutes.
And, and after this hearing, um, it would proceed to the trustees for another hearing. Um.
But then the, will the trustees, they, they won't have that knowledge either. Or, uh, no.
Probably, probably not, but it's another, it's another time for you to go and voice your concern, but you won't get a mailing for that one like you do for this one, so you'll just have to attend the next trustees meeting, which is the third Wednesday of the month, right?
Uh, normally, but not.
Exactly. It's not this month, okay.
Be in the week.
So the ninth, June nineteenth is a federal holiday.
So they're doing it the twelfth. So on June twelfth.
The twelfth?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're doing another hearing on the fifth. Okay.
So on June twelfth, they'll have a meeting and they'll set, uh, if, if we approve this, they will set a hearing date for this. So if you attend that meeting, then you will find out when the hearing will occur, and you can go and voice your concern there as well, because like Tom said, unfortunately, we can't do anything about drainage, so you just have to keep being the squeaky wheel to people to make sure somebody is watching that issue.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be, have a major issue, because, uh, uh, and I'm pretty sure it, it will be under the flood plan.
It'll be what?
For, for, for a federal, uh, hundred year, uh, flood plan.
There's not a flood plain there.
No.
While it might flood, it is not a flood plain, unfortunately. Yeah, yeah, because you can see the, I mean.
Yeah, right.
It's clear, yeah, there's no.
If there's a stream, there could be a.
Yeah.
Just not identified.
Uh, oh, there is no stream either.
I think the it, it should be brought up to these levels.
Oh.
And, and, and this level, because then the homeowner expenses also builds up as they keep on going further and further down the street.
Yeah.
The same, you know, the meetings and all that.
Well, we, we do appreciate you coming in here and letting us know your concerns. And I'm sure Joe will be willing to work with you.
I don't have all the answers yet, but we'll track them down, so.
Yeah, because I, well.
Even.
Trains and you know where, it's just like stops.
Goes that way.
Oh, okay. You can see now, this.
There's no other, nobody else who wanted to speak at this hearing. I'm going to, uh, close the public portion of the hearing.
Yeah, because it's low here.
I'll move on to whether the commission has any other, uh, further questions or comments.
Are you guys able to hear us on the phone?
Want to discuss about this particular application. Yeah. It. If there is no further discussion, thank you, Joe, for being willing to, to talk with the neighbors.
Anytime.
Um, if there's no further discussion, what is the commissioners, commission's pleasure concerning, uh, application, uh, HTZ C twenty-four dash four dash zero four.
You have been as much.
And I was trying to read what it said.
Does somebody, I don't want to have a question. Um, I have closed the public portion, I'm sorry, it might have been.
Johnny.
Was it up there before?
What? It what, are you able to hear us on the phone?
I would like to talk iPhone to everyone.
I think you should be able to ask them to unmute in the list of participants.
Can you guys? Can you hear us?
I don't know if they can unmute themselves.
They should.
Can you hear anyone?
Orange. It's like clicking any things. Oh, that's one, okay.
Okay.
It's a problem they have, okay, which one is it? I can't actually read any of them.
iPhone.
Yeah.
To unmute. So.
The one right below that one.
Well, Chris's iPhone?
The next one.
Yeah.
That one.
Williamson?
Yeah, I think that's the one.
They're unmuted currently.
Well, it says, um, I would like to.
Remember when I, I couldn't talk? At the meet, the other Zoom meeting, I couldn't talk, I could only type, it wouldn't let me.
Is the sound on the TV here?
Yeah, oh. And so we're going to see if I can unmute. So if they want to speak, they can unmute.
Not if we can't hear them, though.
Anyone speaking.
This is, this is Robin, can you hear me?
Use, use the chat or something.
Let me type the message.
This one is the well, that volume is down pretty well.
Pass, can you guys hear us? There's volume on. Good evening, can you hear us?
Hmm. I'm even trying to speak. See, it won't even let word. On the, I mean, but they're not.
This is John, can you hear me?
John, I can hear you.
Oh, his name is.
And I can hear you, Rob.